Meeting for Library Board justices. Tonight is a Tuesday, November 19, 2024, 6 o'clock. If you would like to watch a live telecast, feel free to go on youtube.com slash at DailyCityGov/streams, or DailyCity.org/Agendas, or Comcast Channel 27. If you'd like to submit a public comment, please feel free to do so at DailyCity.org/Agendas, or email at libraryboard@DailyCity.org. I would like to call this meeting's order. First order of business is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Pacheco.
President.
Trustee Lex.
President.
Vice President Goodman.
Here.
And President Tronco.
Here.
And trustee Logarta is not with us at this time.
May I get a motion to, for approval of the agenda, please?
I move that the agenda be approved.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Approval passes. May I also get an approval of the minutes? May I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? None, thank you. For the next item is the regular meeting. Oh, pardon me. Next item is the presentations report from Daily City Public Library Associates.
We are, have the privilege of having Director Dan Barros from the Board of Directors of the DCPLA.
Can you guys hear me okay? All right. Thank you for having me tonight representing Daily City Public Library Associates. My name is Daniel Barros. I'm the current vice president of DCPLA. Yeah, that's newly appointed, right? So a few updates for you this evening. Recently, we had our Art and Lit Festival, which was a great success. Very good attendance on November 3rd at the Ceremony Center. Thank you again to trustee Tronco for donating funds to purchase more Art and Lit t-shirts this year for our event volunteers. I personally thank you. I got one of those as myself, so thank you so much. Also want to let you guys know that applications for the next Daily City Youth Poet Laureate are now open and will be continuing to accept applications through January 31st of 2025. Also, as a reminder, on October 28th at the Daily City Council meeting, DCPLA Director Clayton Koo presented a grant of $20,700 to the Daily City Public Library. That grant is divided into two sections. So $5,700 was awarded from the town of Colma as part of their annual grant program, and that will be going towards replacing six laptops at the John Daly branch. And then $15,000 was given from Sunlight Giving, and that will be going towards replacing early learning computers in the John Daly, Westlake, and Bayshore branches as well. And that concludes my report for this evening. Happy to take any questions if you guys have any.
None.
Well, first of all, Dan, I just wanted to thank you and DCPLA for these generous contributions. And I also want to thank through you the town of Colma for its support of the Daily City Library system. We're really glad to have you as a partner because you're such a good one.
Oh, no doubt. I mean, and we're happy to be a partner. As you know, we don't have any libraries in the town of Colma, so this is, this is our way to still be connected within the library system within San Mateo County to not only support you guys, but also like with my position being a part of this. This board gives us representation, a seat at the table, and a voice as well.
I do have a question. In our minutes, there's a reference to a potential partnership between DCPLA and gathering community input. And the minutes indicate that at your next meeting of October 17th, this was going to be discussed and approved or not approved. Can you give me an update on that?
I believe our October 17th meeting was canceled, so we didn't get a chance to discuss that. And it hasn't been discussed yet, I don't believe. So I think we're going to be addressing that when we meet next in January because we're taking a brief holiday break for the December month, I believe, and then we'll be reconvening in January.
Okay, super. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next item, the directors' report usage measures over time.
Okay. So in the past, I know that the board has expressed interest in seeing not just, you know, what happened in the previous year, but also kind of a longer look at things, particularly when we've made big changes like restoring the hours at John Daly and Bayshore. So I put together a brief presentation with a bunch of charts. I think it informs in some ways, but you know, there's a lot of mystery as well, so let's see. So, starting with one of, you know, one of the bigger factors with the public library, we, we're more than just buildings, but, but our facilities are a big part of what we offer the community. And so this represents, this chart shows our annual open hours. Generally speaking, it shouldn't fluctuate that much. There are small fluctuations related to whether or not we were closed over the holidays, small things like that. And then you'll see a fairly major event there that is, of course, the pandemic. And then you can also see from this where we restored the hours at John Daly and Bayshore Library. So that was, you'll see that first showing up in the fiscal '22, '23 year, and so. And then often going along, all these charts kind of have a similar shape, but the library visits. This is an actual gate count. All of our libraries have security gates that also keep account of people separate, separating out people passing in and people passing out. And we keep a log of that, so something we report to the state, and it's also helpful for us.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Could you repeat the security gate? What is?
Oh, so it's what we call a gate count. So it includes a sensor and it tracks people coming in and people going out. So it's able, so we're able to provide this information with quite a bit of confidence in its accuracy, which is nice. We like to count things accurately.
Thank you, Chayla.
Sure.
And this is an annual count?
So this is, so these are done in fiscal years, which I realize is very much how we do things and not necessarily how most people do things. But it was so much easier to get the data this way. This is how we report it to the state library every year, and this is how we report when we report back to the city about our activities. So there you can, I mean, you can see the big one was like the pandemic, not no visits because we did really make an effort to, to be operating as quickly as we could after the, you know, we shut down for a period of time. Then we reopened with curbside service or at the door service, and then we reopened with like no browsing, but you could come in and pick up materials. And then we finally opened with regular service, so.
So do you have any indication of between 2015, '16 versus '16, '17, why there's a fairly significant drop?
I do. So, one of the things I mentioned at the beginning was the hours. And so in September of 2016, well, let's go back. The recession hit us very hard, and not specifically the library, all of Daily City, and all, well, all of everybody. But Daily City was very slow to recover from that. And so what had happened, and you'd see it even more if you went back before this, is that we lost staff positions through attrition, which is, you know, is better than, than, than having to do layoffs or anything like that. But it's definitely, we lost positions throughout that period after the Great Recession. And so at some point, we just didn't have the staff to maintain weekend hours at both Ceremony and Westlake. We went in and we looked at that gate count that I mentioned, and we noticed proportionally that the Saturdays at Westlake were very high. At Ceremony, they were not really higher than other days. I think this is just a speculation, but I think that could have to do with the other uses of the Geller Park area, and it's a little bit hard sometimes to, to find a space to park and to come in on the Saturday. So that may be part of it. Anyway, so based on that, we, we reduced the hours of both locations. So the Saturdays went away at Ceremony and then the Mondays at Westlake, and that allowed us to share staff. So we had a rotating schedule of staff to cover that Saturday, and then they would be off on the following Monday. And so that happened in September 2016, and it's very, very clearly reflected in that lowering at the '16, '17. And then you'll, you'll also see between '14, '15 and '15, '16, Ceremony went up, Westlake went down. So there's a certain amount of variation that just doesn't have any specific cause that we can identify, but there are definitely, the changes in hours are a big one. And then here you can see, after the pandemic, you'll see, this was something you guys asked about, that little gray bar, which is, which is Bayshore. And it did go up relatively speaking quite a bit when we were able to restore those hours. And that happened in February of '22. So both John Daly and Bayshore have gone up. They're not where I think we'd hoped that they would be, which would be, well, higher than even '14, '15, but they are going in the right direction, which is a good thing. And I know the staff there are working really hard to, you know, bring people into the building, make sure that the community is aware that those hours have been restored because it was slow for people to, we have, we literally have flags out front announcing it, but it's still, you know, people got really used to the reduced hours. Anything else on library visits before I move on?
I was just gonna comment that it's good to see that '23, '24 is actually exceeding the 19, or 2019, 2020 account with the exception of the Westlake branch.
Yeah, no, yeah.
So, you know, three out of four is pretty good.
I'm hoping it's a trend.
The trend is right.
Yeah.
Did anyone else have any questions before I go?
No.
So moving on, this, these all look very similar, but circulation of physical items. So this is checkout essentially. And you'll see that there's less, less of the drop down and rise up because we, we were circulating items for, for most of the pandemic era. But it definitely went down because people were not going out and about as much.
Right.
And you will, you will see some, some rise with the Bayshore and John Daly in the last two fiscal years. And you'll definitely see that decrease that happened in '16, '17, kind of same, same trend. This, this does seem to, it's not trending up, but I think you'll, you'll see, if you move into the electronic, that is something that is steeply trending up. And so I know people who use Libby, use the Libby app for, for overdrive, you know, have in many ways moved away from checking out the physical materials. There's still, still more physical materials are checked out really, especially I think people who, who want to check out picture books for, for reading to their kids at home. They, they still seem to prefer print materials. A lot of people still prefer print materials, but the, the ebooks are extremely convenient, and, and a lot of people have moved in that direction. This is not just the overdrive. You'll see the overdrive is the lighter blue, but includes, we have some ebooks from other sources. There's technical ebooks from O'Reilly, and there's other online resources. So we have, of course, the, the canopy and kinds of different e-resources. You know about those. And then another thing where you'll see, pretty, pretty dramatic increases. You'll see 2021, obviously, that was the pandemic. Nobody used our public computers. You do see the wifi, which is the lighter, the lighter color. And we, we have external, well, you can, you can, if you're close enough, you can get our wifi outside the library. And then we did actually install with the help at Ceremony of the, of the county. We installed an out, an exterior hotspot.
Oh, sweet.
And then we did the same over at the Bayshore Library as well. So that, that allowed people, especially during a time when you don't want to be around other people, you can be in the safety of your little car bubble. I just, anecdotally, you know, I come and go from the Ceremony Library a lot in this, and you can see in the parking lot that lots of people using our, our wifi. It's, it's on, it starts early in the morning at 7:00 AM, and it goes through till about 11, I think it's 11:00 PM. So it's not 24/7 because we didn't want to create an attractive nuisance potentially at night, but we want to make it as available as we can. And then this one, this one's challenging to explain. This is, it's actually two lines. You can barely even see the one at the bottom, but it's a line graph showing our, well, our storytimes, which would be our most regular thing, but, but special activities, all the activities we have during the summer, workshops, events. The lower line is just the number of programs. Obviously, the number of programs is less than the people coming to them. And you can see that we actually are quite steady. There, there was a downward trend around the pandemic, and it, we did, staff were really, really creative in coming up with virtual programming around that time. Wasn't as adopted as enthusiastically in this community as it was in some, but people still did it. We got positive response to that. But there was, there was definitely a dip in figuring out how to do that. So we had a lower number of, of programs. And then also, once we got to the point where a lot of libraries were doing both, and we just, we did not have the capacity to do that, so we moved back into in-person programming. But there, you know, that getting back up, up to speed in that was a little slow, so you'll see that, that in the chart. The higher, more erratic graph is, is attendance. And I, I think there's many things that impact attendance. All of our storytimes are generally well-attended. We have, and our activities and workshops, it really fluctuates. Over the summer is a great example. We had ovens just all week, every, every week throughout the summer at the various locations. And some, you'd get more people than you could fit in the space, and others less. And sometimes it was, you know, clearly that it was like slime. They'll just come out in droves to make slime. And other things maybe just weren't as appealing, and we learned from that. But then it can also be other things. It can be weather, it can be whether it's around a holiday. You know, there's a lot of factors, so. I don't know if anyone has any, any insight that they could add to this. Obviously, we make every effort to, to try and schedule things in such a way that, that it would attract the best audience. And then finally, I wanted, I had an upward trending graph. This is our per capita expenditures. And so this, our discretionary budget doesn't really change that much year to year, but our personnel costs do, and this is, this is mainly what this reflects. Staff costs go up with salaries and also the costs with benefits. And then the other thing that impacts this is actually our capita, our, our population. This is based on population figures that are actually provided by the state library that say this is your service population, and it had been up at 108, and it's now like 101. So that, that has a, you know, it's a, just a mathematical formula to figure out your per capita spending. And, and if you have less people, it's going to look higher. So that's a factor, but also just, those costs are just higher. So, but the city is, is supporting the library with that. And as I said, you know, these are, there are a lot of factors that we can identify that, that are impacting usage. There's, there's some that are maybe more mysterious. I think probably the big ones are going to be, the open hours are a big, big thing. And, and hopefully, at some point, we'll, we'll be able to add some hours, particularly weekend hours at the main library, and restore that, that Monday at, at Westlake. It's just a matter of adding a few, a few staff positions. Facilities also makes a difference. I'm hoping it's not going to have a big aesthetic impact, but I'm hoping once the construction has done at Ceremony, that, that, that might be a more appealing facility. Collections, of course, we make every effort to have our collection reflect the interests and makeup of our, of our community. But I will say, I know as a, as a library, some, some of the libraries in the community philosophically make the decision to have many fewer different titles and to buy a lot of something that's very popular and then just weed it down quickly. We don't really have the budget to support that, and it's just not how we've typically operated. Programming also has an impact. We want to, you know, our storytimes are, families really enjoy those. But there, I think we'd probably benefit from having more weekly programming, but we've just not been able to sustain that. It's, it's, having four locations, I think, is also a big impact for us. Looking at like South San Francisco where there's just the two. It's just, it's just, you know, you're spread a little bit thinner. But you're in those, each, you know, those neighborhoods, and it's convenient for people, so it's a trade-off. There's also potentially demographic shifts. Something I noticed was that our number of, of child borrowers is lower. And I know that people are saying that, that families with young children are moving out of this area due to the cost of living, so that could be part of it. And then more seemingly trivial things, but parking, which is anything but trivial, definitely. Although, you know, if you, if you visit San Francisco libraries, you know, we have an abundance of parking relative to those which generally have no parking whatsoever. And then, of course, nearby options. You know, South San Francisco opened their beautiful new facility, and they have, you know, they have a maker space, and so it may be attracting other people. So those are, those were the factors that, that we've identified. But I just wanted to share this with you all, and if you had any input on it or any.
Yeah, I had a question with regards to Libby. How is it accounted for which libraries have which books and how many? Because I realize probably with the counting, when I use Libby, it's, I'm connected to a lot of libraries, so a lot of times it's LA that has a lot of copies of something, where here, San Francisco may have more, but it really changes. Like Marin, probably none, Oakland may have some. But depending on what you're looking for, it's like 19 weeks wait. And I'm like, I'm not waiting 19 weeks. I'll just check out the book and read it faster. But just kind of curious how that works, or if you know.
So it's similar to our physical collections. So it's actually, there are librarians, including actually our, our library this particular year is tasked with chairing that process for the peninsula. And it's just a select, actually going into the catalog, buying things. They, you're really licensing things, I should say. And so there's avail, sometimes there's multiple types of availability to multiple types of licenses. So there's going to be a license that's perpetual use, or just two years, or one year, or 24 checkouts, or, you know, those sorts of things. And so they make all those decisions. They, there is a certain amount of the budget that is specifically to fill holds, and so they try and fill as many as possible to get that hold's wait time as low as possible. We also, in the past, have had a little bit of funding, but it did get trimmed out for, for a collection that was just Daily City. So if we saw Daily City people were waiting, we could spend our own local resources to try and meet that need.
So we're not competing with like LA trying to get the same copies? And they're like, we need 50 because it's LA County.
So LA has so, so many because they, they just, they, they buy them. They buy them.
Oh, okay.
The same thing with San Francisco, and I know that they are impacted by, by people who, who enjoy the lower wait time that they offer.
Yeah.
It's, it's an investment, and it's something that they've chosen to do. I will say, PLS, including Daily City, does make a pretty major investment in our e-resources, but we're maybe not meeting the, the demand as well as specifically San Francisco and LAPL. But we're doing well generally. And it's, and it's something we look at continuously. It's actually, I know, we were just running some stats so that it could be considered for the next budget.
Cool. Thank you.
And it does, each year it goes up.
One of my questions was, Chayla, I wanted to know, like, is it possible if we could get a copy of this?
Sure. I'll, I'll email it to you. Is that okay?
Yeah. And then also, like, for example, for this, like, I was interested in seeing like if DCPLA would be interested in using that, like, if we're, if and when they do have their meeting for, in developing that assessment? Because I, when that showed up, like, I was really thinking about the trend of like the visits, of like how many people are coming from like, at the different locations? Because I was trying to wonder, like, why is it like, it's the same trend? Like, a specific location has a higher usage versus another one? And it's like the same, like, throughout the years or the timeline?
I've been with the library for over 20 years, and it's always kind of proportionally remained that way. And it's interesting. I mean, first, some, looking at Bayshore, obviously, it's a little geographically isolated, and then, and so the, the actual population there that's like right in that neighborhood is, is a lot smaller, so that's, that's, I think, probably what happens there. And, and some of these other factors, I'm sure, as well. But it's, it's been consistent, even back when I started, when we had a lot better hours at all of our locations. It was always like that.
I have a question regarding the open hours. So you were mentioning earlier, Chayla, that you were looking into extending the hours of Westlake and, and maybe John Daly?
Well, well, ideally, I would hope, and, and this is, you know, more of a budget discussion outside, of course, of, of our hands, but that it, we would restore that Monday that we closed at Westlake and then open Saturday at Ceremony. So there wouldn't, because what we're doing now is we have all of the staff in a rotation to cover that Saturday at Westlake. So it would, it would allow us to have two, two rotations.
Yeah. The reason why I ask that question too, Chayla, is because usually when you extend hours like that, you know, in the library, that shows that there must be some good growth in the economy. Because usually when the economy goes down or you have some type of recession, what happens? Your library hours get cut.
Yeah.
You know, so that's what I was wondering, if there was like a big spike in, in the economy, or that is driven by that?
So, it's just something that I'm stating as a, as a, as sort of a goal or a wish even, maybe. I don't know, I'm, I'm hoping that we will find that the economy is in such a place that it could support that at some point. And that would be, that would be the change that I would advocate for.
Yeah, because that would be great for the community if hours were extended in the library. I remember when I was growing up, whenever I would go to the library on a Saturday and it would be closed, I'm like, oh, bummer. And then, then they'll tell you, we'll go to Westlake. I'm like, well, I don't have a car yet, you know, so, yeah.
Well, and I know some people really find it frustrating that we kind of stagger things so that the Ceremony Library is open Monday and Tuesday evenings. Westlake is open Tuesday evening, John Daly Wednesday evening, and Bayshore Thursday evening. And it's done to try and, like, make the most available hours for people that, but it really is only for people who would move between the branches, it's true.
Okay.
And it, and it makes it a little bit harder to, to keep track of. So there, again, I think there are benefits, and then there are also costs to that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
There's nothing else? You can continue, Chayla.
That was all I had, actually, of, of, of the statistics. I just wanted to share something with you. There wasn't anything really major, urgent going on, so I thought it was a good time to take a moment to do that.
Oh, okay. Thank you. May we go to the next item, the trustees' report with regards to community outreach?
So I, yeah, I put, I put this on, as, as Daniels had said, the, well, we'll bring back the topic of collaborating with the trustees, but they had tabled it until their January meeting. So I took that off the agenda, and I just put community outreach because So, I took that off the agenda and I just put community outreach, because some people had expressed an interest in kind of reporting back on, on places, I know you were at the, the Art and Lit Fest, any, if people went to any, any events in the community.
Sorry.
It's, it's for you.
I can report on the North San Mateo County Project Read trivia contest, which took place last Friday night. Chayla was the esteemed timekeeper for the contest, did a great job. And it was a terrific evening, it looked like there was really good attendance, lots of teams. And the DCPLA team actually was ranked fourth at the end of the first round. They really did a great job. Unfortunately, they fell by the wayside in the second round. And as it turned out, the winners were the same winners as last year, perhaps not in the same order. But these three individual groups are powerhouses in terms of trivia. And they seem to dominate when it comes to the second round and the, and the sudden death round. But it was a nice evening, I assume that it was financially successful, and, you know, I enjoyed attending. And I appreciate DCPLA's invitation for me to attend that meeting, which I might not have been able to do otherwise.
And I, I wanted to mention, our mayor was able to attend, I, I don't know that she had had previously. So, much appreciated to have that representation there. Project Read serves Daily City, Colma, South San Francisco and San Bruno. So, it's good, good for Daily City to have such a great presence, thank you for coming.
Was this the event at Ceremony?
This, this was the annual Project Read trivia challenge, it's at the, it's every, every year, you can go next year if you like. It's at the South San Francisco Conference Center and it's a fundraiser, yeah.
On Airport Road.
Oh, Airport Road.
Yeah, not too far from the Costco.
Yes.
Right near the Costco.
Are you talking about the, the conference center there?
Yeah.
Oh, that place, oh, okay, okay. Makes sense.
I guess for myself, it's not really the library, but I'm going to say it anyway. I went to go watch a, a music show out in Pacifica at the Longboard. This one artist, hip-hop artist, rapper, MC, he's from Vallejo, California, named La Russell. He was also featured on, was it recently on NPR's Tiny Desk? So, I thought of him, because like, I guess in this part, because I remember seeing like one of his performances online, it was at the Solano Library. So, it just reminded me like, you know, it would be, that'd be interesting to do something, maybe, something like that, if that was a possibility. Because I know like the Linda Lindas, like they, like they've also did that too, like in one of their music videos.
Oh, cool, yeah.
Did anyone else have anything?
I have an update with the, that guy who reached out to us from Mala Fars. And he's still kind of fishing to see if more people are interested. He was giving it a two-month timeframe, and one other guy from San Mateo reached out. And the three of us may try and find a time to give a Zoom call or something, but it's really unofficial and nobody really, there's no agenda.
Okay.
So, we'll see what comes up of it, if anything.
Yeah, thank you for the update, sorry, I should have put that on the agenda.
I'm good.
If there is nothing else, may we go towards announcements and communications?
I, I, I can just update people on upcoming things. We have, well, we have a new series, a monthly series for teens and tweens arts programming. One of our staff is doing it at Ceremony, and they will be doing, this is tomorrow, Wednesday, the twentieth, at four PM, with reservation required, learn about laser cutting. And they are going to be laser cutting a kind of a, a keychain, an interlocking keychain. And so, if anyone is interested, it is open, it's just for teens and tweens, and registration is required. Go to DCPL-teen-nove24 eventbrite.com. And then we are excited, and we're in the early stages, but we're excited. We'll be hosting some parole-making workshops again. We've done this in, in past years many times, and it's always a big hit, people really enjoy it. It is, it is a, a challenge, but a really good challenge, if you've not done it before. So, we'll be doing this in, in December. We have three sequential workshops, Ceremony, John Daly and Bay Shore, it should be on the December tenth, eleventh and twelfth, they'll be evening programs. And yeah, so we're excited about that, we're hoping to partner with, with the Bionahan Resource Center, so. And, and, oh, and the Kupua, yeah.
I was going to ask, was there any updates of like, because I wasn't sure if anyone responded yet for like volunteers?
Oh, for volunteers, I don't, I don't think anyone had, one of the staff reached out to try and find some volunteers to help, because it is a very, it's a challenging craft to make these, there's the, the bamboo stars covered in the colorful, either tissue paper or cellophane, that's traditional around the holidays in, in the Philippines. So, we're, we're hoping to get some volunteers. And then the one that's at Bay Shore, which is going to be on the twelfth, is actually going to be part of a larger program. They're having the Bay Shore Holiday Celebration, they're good about their seasonal celebrations. So, there, yeah, that's going to be, something that's going to be both library and community center. And then we're also, this is to be determined, but we're going to do some, something with laser cutting at John Daly in December. We also, then at the, at the end of December, we, or the city actually is going to close for the holidays again, which we didn't do last year, but we had done in previous years. So, we'll, we'll have signs and make sure everyone's notified of that. And then, in January, we will be having an estate planning and revocable trust workshop at the Westlake Library, January fourteenth. It's going to be an evening program, and the esteemed estate attorney, Tom Nurse, will be presenting, so we're very excited about that. And then one last thing was, I just, just approved the proofs for the cards that are going to be printed after the, our art contest, our children's art contest. So, I cannot say exactly when they will be arriving, but we've announced the winners and they're all very excited. If you follow us on social media, you'll see their designs, otherwise I'll bring some in when they arrive.
I was just going to say that I've seen the signage at the Westlake Branch for the winning cards, and they're very cute. They're very attractive and colorful, and I think they'll represent the library well.
Yeah, I was really, really pleased with the submissions and, yeah, it's, it's something we, we had never done. Libraries often, you know, do this sort of a contest, but we had never done it before, and the youth services team brought it to me. I was like, this is fantastic.
I was just wondering, are the winners of the, well, the winning artworks that are going to be on the cards, are the artists recognized in any particular way other than by their work?
Oh, they're, they, they came in and met with the youth services team, and they were presented with a certificate, and they got to pick out some books and, you know, it was a, it was a small thing, they came in with their families.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I think, I think that was all I had.
All right, thank you, Chayla. And then the next item is agenda building for the next meeting?
So, historically, we have canceled our December meeting, it's right before the holidays. So, I don't, that's, that's up to you, but if we meet again in January, we can discuss. Although actually, we meet right before the DCPLA does, so I was going to say we could discuss that collaboration, but it might be too early.
I will leave that up to my fellow trustees, like, I'm fine with either or.
I'm in favor of canceling December, just holidays and whatnot.
Oh, what, canceling the, the meeting in December? Well, to me, that's up to you, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't blame you for, for doing that, I mean, but, you know, it's just all up to you guys, so.
Does anyone have any agenda items that they think would, would benefit from a, a December rather than a January meeting?
I'm looking at the agenda building from our, from our, our minutes, and there are two items that I don't think we covered tonight, the San Mateo Arts Grant and the Collection Development Policy.
Oh, yes, so, I, I'm sorry, I reached out.
You know, rolled over to.
Yeah, the San Mateo County Arts Grant, I, I looked into it further and it does unfortunately look like it's not something we're eligible for. So, that was kind of that on that. And then the, we will definitely be addressing the Collection Development Policy, but there's, we're, we're still waiting on some more guidance from the state. So, we're, we just don't have it, it's, it's too premature to do that.
Okay.
So, that'll probably be, it, it might be several months really. But when we're done, I'll bring it, we'll, I'll bring it to you guys, and then it also then eventually is, is submitted to the state.
Thanks.
Do you have any thoughts, Chayla, about a December meeting or not?
Um, I, I, at this time anyway, I, I can't think of anything that really requires it. I know everyone's kind of every which way at that time, so, we've, I mean, we've almost always canceled it, so.
All right, I would like to make a mo, do I have to make a motion for that, or I could just ask?
I think I can just, just direct, direction to staff.
Yeah, direction to staff, please, for canceling December meeting and then continuing on to January.
January, so the agenda building will be for January, do you have, does anyone have any items they'd like to?
Not currently, Chayla, not currently.
We'll see what, what's evolved.
For me, Chayla, could it be the follow-up about potential workshops? Because I, I remember when you brought up, was it Tom Nurse's name? Because I was asking about like a living trust or like advanced health directives, so like, that's like some stuff, like, I'm going to say, I'm getting into, but it's like something I would like to, like us to look into and then to share with, you know, people in our community to think about and look into like ahead of time.
Okay, so, so, potential workshop topics?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got a few things in the works.
If there's nothing else, was there any public comments from, all right, none? All right, I would like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second. So moved.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
None, which passes, and the meeting at six forty-two, thank you.
All right, everyone.